In addition to a property owner initiation, allow for the planning director and the city council to initiate a historic city landmark designation. The city's code is written and anticipates a property owner that's a willing participant in that process. And because of that assumption and anticipation of the way the code is written, unlike some of our other land use applications when they are pending, such as like a site review application, the code doesn't prevent the issuance of a demolition permit when there's a historic landmark designation application pending. And so what this means for the discussion and any sort of action today is that the council's decision today, if there was a decision to initiate the historic landmark designation for these east grandstands, it wouldn't suspend action on the U of O's demolition permit application. And it also would mean that a council initiation today couldn't serve as a basis for city staff to deny the U of O's demolition permit application. And there's some other ways in which the code's assumption about a willing property owner around the historic, the city's historic landmark designation is kind of woven into our code is the provision that even if the, it was initiated and the process was followed and the historic review board ultimately designated it a historic landmark, the, and all that happened before it was demolished, the next day, the property owner would be able to request that the planning director remove that designation. And again, that's the, the method and the structure of the city's code and kind of those outcomes I just laid out is based around the assumption of a, of a willing property owner with the designation.
Okay. Thank you very much for that clarification. I have already a few people in the queue and I just want to say to the audience and to the listening public that we are back here because the city council really felt a need to go through a more open process on this and feeling that the public was caught by surprise about what was happening when we wanted an opportunity to sort of evaluate our, our status. And some good work has happened in the last week in terms of meetings with the University of Oregon and their submission of a letter to us about what they proposed to do. So we're kind of hopefully starting from a good place for our conversation. I'm really looking forward to hear what council has to say. And I'm going to let Alan start it off and then I have Mike and Emily in the queue. Take it away.
Yeah, I put forward this motion not because I wanted to stop the stadium or thought that we could, but, and the historic designation, as the city attorney has said, wouldn't stop the demolition of, of the project, of the east grandstands. But I did that because there was an utter lack of absence of any community engagement whatsoever on the part of the U of O and in particular, the U of O athletic department. And I felt like we needed to fill that void. We were caught by surprise. The original plan had the east grandstands incorporated and then it didn't. So people had no place to, to talk about this. And if anything, Eugene is a very engaged community. And the three things that we needed to talk about were what happens to the east grandstands? And what do we, and then more importantly, to the neighborhoods that I represent around the U of O, the construction impacts and operational impacts? And you know, the east grandstands are a very historic and iconic structure and they're very different than other kind of assets because of their, their history and their, its unique nature. And like it or not, it is a public asset. It owned, is owned by the people of Oregon and this community. And, and when people didn't have an opportunity to talk about it and, and have their input, they felt like they weren't heard. And my, what I've learned over the last 12 years being a city councillor is when people don't get a, get a, don't get an opportunity to be heard, they feel as though they're disrespected. And that's what this is about to me. This is about the respect of the community and the ability to talk about this and, and provide input. I, in contrast, the, the process used by the U of O to do the, the night campus with all the public outreach, hiring of Chris Edwards and all the great work that they've done has smoothed the way for that process to go forward. And this for the athletic department is a stark contrast for me. And, and so I, along with the mayor, met with President Schill and, and talked about these issues and talked about that lack of public engagement in this respect that not only the council, I believe, by an eight to nothing vote, but also the community felt in, in this whole process that it was so sudden that it had no public engagement. So we talked about a process that would enable the community to be engaged on the three issues that I discussed. And what President Schill promised myself and the mayor and what we got in the letter wasn't a, a, a public process to talk about the east grandstands. Have them talk about why they believe it can't be moved, why it's not fixable and what to do with this, what to do with it once it's been dismantled and where they're going to store it, how it's going to be used and what we could potentially do with it. I'm sure there are going to be very many creative ideas about that. So that's part one. Part two is a public process about the construction. The process that the, the, that the U of O was forced into doing because the neighborhood sued them around the Mat Knight Arena actually works incredibly well in terms of the construction impacts. How are they going to not go through the neighborhood and all those things? So that's the, the, one of the big concerns that people around my neighborhood, the people in the neighborhoods around the U of O have. And then finally, what happens, this is a bigger, more, probably potentially more intensively used facility. And what about the operational impacts? Specifically, the big three issues that I keep hearing about and that we dealt with in the Mat Knight Arena Committee, noise, parking and traffic. And, and President Schill agreed that while they only really, surprisingly, only need a building permit to do this big massive construction project, he agreed to have a public process around those three issues and work something similar to what we did with the Mat Knight Arena and the monitoring committee, which works really good as a template to move forward to discuss those three issues around noise, parking and traffic. So with those promises from the U of O about public engagement and where to move forward, I asked staff to craft a motion that is in front of you today that embodies our working with them, with the U of O on those three issues.
Thank you. Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. Two things. Number one, Alan, I guess, would you say this, this motion covers the opportunities for all discussions around potential use of the materials once dismantled with the university and other organizations? Is that a fair? The reason is because there's a couple of ideas out there. One that I've thought of and then heard somebody else think of, and I think is interesting in that there are two high schools, the two biggest high schools, I think, in our community that don't have grandstands around their track fields. And for the first time in history, Sheldon's going to hold the championship for the district championship next year and they have no grandstands of any kind. And I don't know that it's possible and it's probably economically infeasible, but if it were possible to use some of the benches, for example, in the construction of new grandstands around the university fields, I think that would be an appropriate place to kind of seed tomorrow in that way. Is that part of this motion that an idea like that could be possible to talk about?
Yeah, and Mayor can speak to this as well. When I met with President Schill, we talked about all the myriad of possibilities, including moving it, whether that's even feasible, probably not, but, and moving it to Civic and, or dismantling it, using it in other places. And we had no preconceived ideas about how that would work, but all those potential ideas could be on the table about what would we do with it? What the U of O's committed to do is dismantle it as much as they can, given the constraints that they have. Also, they're, they're all, I think there's nine layers of lead paint on all that grandstands, so that's a problem. And then store it and then have a conversation about what to do with it. So all those creative ideas like that, I think, incorporate into this process.
Well, I, as I mentioned, I know it might be cost prohibitive, but I, that's an idea that I think has some merit, at least for the discussion. I will say I'm, I'm willing to vote in support of this. I spoke at the initial public input that we got at the forum that we had. There were an awful lot of people who spoke to the historic nature of this and they spoke to the important piece this plays in the yesterday of not just our community, but our state. And I'm moved by that. I'm, I certainly understand that. But I can't remember whom, and that doesn't matter. I heard one or two people say that Coach Bowerman would not probably want, you know, want to not have a new facility so much as respect the, the old and the historic. And I had the thought at the time and sense that this is the same guy that poured rubber pellets on a waffle iron, right? I mean, just to shave a little bit of time off of what was possible. And for me, I think that's the real legacy of our, of our, of the track program at the University of Oregon, of our state, frankly, of our community, is that kind of innovative future thinking, moving to tomorrow appropriately, reaching out and trying to become better and, and using the best technology to do it. I think that's, that's the real, you know, legacy of, of both that program and our community. And so I think this new facility honors that and, and helps future generations to have the same kind of opportunity. So I'm, I'm willing to support this.
Emily?
Thank you. I'm conflicted about this motion. I think it's about two different subjects. One is historical designation and the other is how the city will participate and assist. So I really have a trouble with that and I think it's two different issues. So I move to divide this motion. I don't know if I can do that when we haven't even put it on the table yet, so.
No. Once the motion is put on the table and then assuming it is seconded, that would be an opportunity to move to divide.
Okay. I'll use the rest of my time to speak to it. I went over and talked to people at the U of O and got to see more pictures and talk about the design, which I really didn't like for a lot of reasons. And I got a lot more information. One thing that people, including me, didn't know is that that big picture in the newspaper's not drawn to scale. So it looks much more overwhelming than it may be. Obviously, it was decided quite a while ago by the designers that the grandstand wouldn't be included. The design was pushed up right to the edge. I don't know how much redesigning there was once they decided it wasn't appropriate to keep it. And yeah, there wasn't public input. I think they pulled a fast one. But here we are with this situation and the outlines given in the AIS and the fact that the U of O is not a willing property owner, I think if we pursued this, actually would delay it so that construction would not be done in time for 2021. So it kind of comes almost to a question of how much do we want 2021? Because if we're going to stop this, it's going to change the picture. And that's a different subject, how much you like 2021. I don't know what the enduring effect of, of having the games is. They say the world is coming. I hope they'll leave afterwards. I believe the grandstand does have ADA challenges, dry rot, lead paint, narrow seats, obstructing posts. I also understand that people love it. Regardless of the east grandstand, the facility needs major renovation just to take care of our student athletes. There's not enough room for storage for exercising. They have to exercise at different times. So we'll derail all of that if we keep going in this way to stop it. But I also want to say I'm really thank you, thankful for everyone who came out at the last meeting and spoke their feelings. And I'm really glad we listened to them and took another look.
Thank you. Chris?
Thanks. I appreciate all the conversation around this. It's, it's one that we've had before. We had this conversation around Civic Stadium. We've had this conversation around City Hall. Now we're having it here. And I think each time we have it, it's, it's a worthwhile conversation to have. How do you honor and respect the past and history while you still move into the future? And the future will come. The future will be here and we need to be able to accommodate it. And a facility like this is historic and worthy of that respect, but it is also a facility for the athletes and the spectators. And it needs to be a facility that meets the needs of the athletes and the spectators. And from that standpoint, I think meeting the need of the future is important. And we talk about 2021. I think 2021 is important, but that's not the end of the conversation. That's a springboard for all of the future things that are going to happen there. And so 2021 may be the catalyst to get it built sooner rather than later, but it will be a facility that will be used into the future. With that in mind, and I agree with Alan, you want to be able to honor and respect the history, so you need to have whatever conversation you need to have. And then you need to figure out what you want to do to be able to honor that history. And I think the university's interest in figuring out how to reuse, recycle or accommodate the materials left over from that stand, I think is a worthwhile thing to do. So I'm fine with the motion the way it is. I think it's an effort for us to get at being respectful of our history, but still recognizing there's a future we need to accommodate. So I'll, I, you can divide if you want to, but I can support it the way it is.
Betty?
Thank you. This reminds me of City Hall all over again. And we know what happened there, which wasn't good. I, this is one of the most, biggest lobbying efforts I've seen since I, in the 21 years I've been on the council. Reminds me, the extent of the lobbying effort reminds me of the smoking ban and the renters' protections, both of which turned out well. I think this one is not going to turn out well. It sounds as if, it sounds as if we can't really do anything. As much as, as I have been lobbied and heard persuasive arguments on both sides, I'm more, I'm more convinced that the people against demolition have the better arguments on their side, the better reasons. And I would like to, if we could delay, at least would give people a time to bring, to try to persuade the other side that, that the stadium deserves protection. I didn't really have an opinion on this until people started talking to me and that started before our big council meeting even. People started saying they were worried about it. And I think the people who care seem to me to have more invested, not financially, but otherwise than the people on the other side. At least I find their arguments more persuasive. And I would like us to start the process for historic designation. I can see that we don't have the votes for that, but that would be my choice if I had a choice and if we could do it. And if it's just a delay, well then maybe during the delaying period, things might change. But when you talk about putting up a picture of what used to be there, it reminds me of a shopping mall where they took, took down the oak forest and, and they named it the White Oak Pavilion, part of it. And they have a picture, it's like you have a picture of a tree saying, this used to be a forest. So I don't know what the, what the best choice is, but I certainly think that if people want a historic designation, and we know it is a historic, it does have historic significance as well as sentimental significance. I think if we could do anything to give it a little more time, we should do it. Thank you.
Jennifer?
Thank you. So first I want to thank the U of O for being willing to invite, it sounds like Emily went out and I did, and really go over their plans in some detail. There's lots of ways to preserve historic stories. I think that's what most people are really concerned about is losing the things about the stadium and the area and our history with track and field that are valuable to us. And if the U of O follows through with their commitment to involve the community in the process of how are we going to use these salvaged materials to tell that story, I think that's a win. I think that's what we're all looking for here. And I will support the motion as it stands.
Thank you. Alan, second round?
Yeah, I guess, you know, I thought about what, what would be the end game of, of doing the historic designation and potentially doing a delay, which might end up costing the U of O an opportunity, athletic department an opportunity for the Olympic trials and potentially the 21 games, which we just seen Walnut, California, couldn't get it together to build it. So that's a real possibility. And so that wasn't what my intent was at all. And I'm pretty firmly believe that the U of O athletic department has no intention now, they did before, about refurbishing the grandstands and, and keeping them as is and fixing them up. So if that's their intent, I don't, I am not convinced that we could, or the community could persuade them otherwise, regardless of what, how much protest there was. I was actually very sympathetic to keeping it. And that was very, my, my first thought was, geez, this is such an amazing facility. Let's keep it and restore it. It would be expensive, but everything's expensive. And that was actually Plan A. This new stadium is Plan B. So moving forward with the new stadium, regardless of whether or not Coach Bowerman would have approved or not, have talked to everything from his son to other people that knew him personally. And I think we'd certainly have to drop the historic part of historic Hayward Field because there's nothing going to be left of it. They will scrape it down to the bare dirt. So my thought was, in doing this motion, was to focus in on the next steps. Given where we are, what, and where we need to be going with this and where the U of O wants to go with it and the athletic department wants to go with this, that the next steps of how do we honor the east grandstands and preserve part of it with potentially really good ideas about reuse? And how do we deal with the construction impacts of the new stadium? And how do we deal with the operational impacts of this new larger stadium are what the intent of this motion is? And when I talked to the President Schill, having them all packaged together was, it had a unifying factor to them, that they were all new public engagements the U of O had and wanted to engage in. And so that's why they're packaged together as a three-part motion that, that had that unifying prospect of more public engagement and, and hearing from the community about good ideas and, and how to mitigate for the impacts.
Any other folks wanting a second round?
I just, I just want to kind of echo some of the comments that I've heard. I totally agree with, with Jennifer that there are lots of ways to tell a story and this is part of our story as a community. And it's not a story that ends with Hayward Field. It's a story that continues beyond in terms of that track and field and the athletes that we encourage and promote and the people who come and visit our community. And we want that story to continue. We don't want it to stop in time. And that's, to me, a very important part of this piece. And the other part of telling that story is how we work together as a community to move forward into the future and how do we engage one another? And I think that ongoing partnership between the university and the city is a critical one. It's critical to both entities. And I think this commitment here to work constructively, pull together what we can to keep that story moving off Hayward Field and also allow it to continue is really, really an important step for the council. So I thank you all for weighing in on that. And then are we ready to put a motion on the table?
Yep. I move to not proceed with historic designation for the Hayward Field east grandstands and to direct the city manager to, one, offer to work with and support the University of Oregon as the university engages the community in discussions regarding the preservation, storage of east grandstand elements, including the university's community process to develop recommendations on reuse of the salvaged materials as much as feasible. Two, offer to work with the university and surrounding neighborhoods to assure that the university mitigates the impacts of the new track and field facility construction. And three, offer to work with the university as it establishes a noise, parking and traffic plan and ongoing neighborhood assessment process for events occurring at the new facility before it goes into operation.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Did you want to offer a?
Yeah, I have a conflict with these two questions. I think that they're separate issues of whether we designate it historically and how we offer to help and take care of the neighborhood. So I move to divide the motion into the historic designation part and then direct the city manager from then on would be their other motion.
Second. Okay. Discussion of the amendments?
It's a non-debatable.
Oh, it's non-debatable?
Motion to divides are not debatable.
Oh, okay. So we just vote on that then? Okay. All in favor of dividing the motion? One, two, three? Opposed? One, two, three? Okay, I'm going to support, support dividing it. So I'll be the breaker in favor.
So now you will have on the table two separate motions to vote on. The first being move to not proceed with a historic designation for the Hayward Field east grandstand.
And so we need a s-
That's been moved in second.
It's already, it's already on, so we can just vote, correct?
If there's no discussion.
You have discussion?
I do. I, see, attorney, you spoke to this earlier when we first started. Can you talk a little more specifically about what would be the effect of a positive vote here of us moving to designate as a historic?
There wouldn't really be one. When it comes to actual demolition of the grandstands, the, the U of O had already, has already, prior to today, submitted their demolition application. And so it, there, as I mentioned earlier, it wouldn't have the effect of delaying issuance of that permit.
So we can vote whatever we like, but that will still be, it will be not demolished? Either way, if the permit is granted, is that correct?
Correct. So it wouldn't, it, the issuance of the demolition permit doesn't actually demolish the building. And so it mean, it could, but the passage of that initiation wouldn't have any impact on city staff's authority to approve or deny the demolition permit. So the demolition, even if there was a motion to initiate the historic- So the demolition, even if there was a motion to initiate the historic designation, the demolition permit would still be acted on and issued.
That's what I'm saying. I'm just trying to put it in plain language for everybody to understand, that even if we were to vote in favor of the historic designation, that's not how the state law works, and that wouldn't stop it from being demolished.
That's correct.
Thank you. Alan, did you want to speak to that again?
Yeah, I guess, you know, I don't understand the point of it. The demo permit will be issued next week, and without a willing owner to stop and have a conversation about that, and they're not willing to do that, then there's nothing that we can do about it. So this would be symbolic. And as far as the symbolism is concerned, well, first, the historic designation laws, I think, are woefully inadequate and very, very weak. They don't prevent hardly anything from being destroyed. The federal ones have a little bit more teeth, but I don't think our state ones do. So that's a different issue. But in terms of willingness to move forward and our ability to do anything about it, you know, I think the symbolism of the East Grandstands and its unique character and its iconic stature speaks for itself. Whether the U of O wants to just demolish that or not is their choice. I do lament the fact that we didn't, as a community, get to weigh in on that. But the U of O has agreed to three different processes where the public can weigh in on this, including what to do with the salvaged and stored parts of the East Grandstand. So with that, I'm not going to support the motion. I just want to make sure everybody understands. I will support the motion, which is, yeah.
Yeah, we're going to need to restate that.
The motion actually says we'll not proceed, so I will, I will support the motion to not proceed with historic designation.
All right. Betty, comment?
Double negatives.
Yes. If it doesn't make any difference what we do here, that's what you're saying. You're saying that the city could not deny a permit to demolish, is that correct?
Correct.
So we're just sitting here talking? Not the first time that's happened, but.
We got that on film, right?
If it is only a gesture, I would still like to make the gesture. You're saying that nobody would be influenced if we say, that's your opinion, right? Your legal opinion?
Nope. What I'm saying is, is that there's nothing in the code that would authorize city staff to deny a demolition permit if a historic designation was initiated by you today. I can't speak to people's emotions are intense, but the code doesn't authorize denial based on an initiation.
So it would be, it would be permitted? And if we pass Alan's motion, what does that do?
It makes the intent of the council clear, and it puts a bookend on a discussion regarding the historic designation initiation.
Can I respond to that? It also engages us with the university in that public engagement process on those three areas.
We say we're complicit in the demolition, which usually wins.
Get more to say?
Well, I might have.
You go. Go right ahead.
I think I have almost.
You do. I just wasn't sure whether you were done.
Oh, okay. I still think it's worthwhile to say what we think is important. And I do think the historic designation, that the, making a gesture toward that is important. And I won't vote to not do it. I think that is just, and I don't think, it is public property, and it belongs to a lot of people, other places besides Eugene even, as we have heard. And I know that, and I don't think we have to do exactly what the university wants us to do. I don't think that, that they have, I didn't see the university coming in and helping us save City Hall or demolish it, either one, but it got demolished. And I will vote against this motion anyway. It's just, it's a gesture, but it's a gesture in the wrong direction, in my opinion. Thank you.
I just, I have Mike waiting in the queue, but I just want to ask a point of clarification. Because even though this vote on not proceeding with a historic designation, even if it failed, it doesn't change the university's capacity to demolish the building, but it does change their timeline in terms of what they do next. Is that correct? That that was part of the challenge?
Not necessarily, because the, it really, it depends on what the university would do with an action of initiating. But they have a pending, they have applied for the demolition permit, and that is pending at the city now. So there would, there would and could be no delay in the issuance of the demolition permit based on an initiation that happens today. The timeline after that isn't what I'm speaking to. It really, it's, there's no basis to deny or delay.
No, I understand that, but there are longer implications in terms of their construction timeline.
Potentially.
So I just wanted to make it clear, it's not entirely symbolic.
Yes, right.
Yes.
Mike?
Thank you. I think it is more symbolic than anything else, this vote, but I'm perfectly okay with that. And I want to respond to Betty's comment about complicity. And the job of the university, now, it's not for me to say I'm on the city council, but in my opinion, the job of the university is tomorrow. The job of the university is what are we preparing young people for, the world tomorrow? And in my opinion, that's the greatest legacy of the U of O, that's the greatest legacy of Oregon and our community, is the things we've been willing to innovate. And from my perspective, if you're going to weigh yesterday, which if anybody loves history and loves the, and cherishes and honors the importance of respecting our yesterdays, it's me, it's a very big thing to me. But if you want to put up tomorrow against yesterday, even symbolically, I'll take tomorrow every time. And I think that's the importance of this, is that these folks want to prepare a facility for kids today, and maybe very young kids today to be able to thrive tomorrow. And it'll be a world-class facility that'll add to our community. So I look at this and say, I want to be a part of that. That sounds like something worthwhile to do, and I think it's the smart thing to do for our community. So even if it's a symbolic vote or conversation, I'm on the side of, I like the symbolism of investing in tomorrow, and I'm willing to do it. Thank you.
Okay. Are we ready for a vote? So we're voting on the first new motion, not to proceed with the historic designation. All in favor? One, two, three, four, five? Opposed? One, it passes. Thank you very much. So now we have the second motion.
So in the second motion, just for clarification for everybody, it would be move to direct the city manager to, one, offer to work, and then the three points.
Okay. I have Alan in the queue, and then Emily.
Yeah, I hope the U of O will, in the future, take into consideration, as they did with the Knight Campus, and take seriously public engagement with public assets, and apply this as lessons learned. And especially the Athletic Department, they have a track record of not doing this. And then, secondly, I would like to compliment President Shill, I know he's not here, on the promises that he has made to the community to engage us on what to do with the salvage of the East Grandstands. And in particular, while they only need a building permit for a construction project this size, it was a little stunning to me, and didn't need a conditional use permit, which would have had them address the issues that we were talking about, noise and parking and traffic. He did promise to engage on that part of the new stadium, even though he didn't have to. So I compliment him on that, both regard to the construction impacts and the operational impacts. So my hat's off to President Shill for agreeing to that.
Thank you. Emily?
Thank you. The reason I wanted to divide this is not because I disagree with any of the three ideas of how we can interact, but I think that even if the first part had gone the other way, we'd still want to talk about our involvement mitigating the impacts of whatever construction did happen. So I asked some questions of John, but I'm going to re-ask them so the public also knows. My first reaction is, well, the U of O wants this, they should pay for everything around it too. So I'm wondering, what's the precedent of how we dealt with Matt Court and the softball stadium? I know it said we would offer to help, but let's say they said, "Yeah, yeah, go ahead. We want you to do everything." How much money or FTDs would we expect to put into this project of working with the neighborhood and the university? What would we spend it on? Where would it come from? What would we have to give up to do it? I just want that information. So, you know, we need to spend our limited time on money on so many things. So do we need to take this on also? And it is important to reassure the neighbors that we are paying attention to this, and we expect the university to pay attention too.
All right, couple thoughts. One, I do appreciate your concern for staff capacity. I think you're consistent in that, and so I do appreciate that. I know the staff appreciates that. I think in this particular case, these are the kinds of things that we do as a part of our regular job duties. So we have neighborhood engagement and outreach that engage in these kinds of activities around the community. I know with Matt Knight Arena, our parking, folks got involved because there were some specifics around parking, so that became important for us as well. So this isn't something where we would be adding new FTE, we're not going to come back to the council and ask for additional expenditure authority or appropriations authority for these kinds of things. I do believe that we want to support the university's efforts in this. We too, just like the council, are committed to the neighborhoods, and the, any impacts that would occur in the neighborhoods, we do have a real, want to be a part of those kinds of conversations and would anticipate being engaged on those, as well as any of the other conversations on items one, two, three.
Thank you very much for that clarification. I think we should do this, and I think we should have done it regardless of the historic designation. And thank you, Alan, for putting those three parts of the motion forward. I think it's very important to reassure people that we are paying attention to what happens and how it affects the neighborhoods. So I support this motion that I divided. Thank you.
Any other, any other comment? Oh, Alan, you want to come back?
Yeah. And thank you for saying that. Those are the big, important parts of it. And I think the lesson, it came out of the lessons learned from the Matthew Knight Arena process that we went through, where the U of O didn't want to engage in any of that process, and the neighborhood actually had to sue them and spent $15,000 of their own money hiring attorneys to bring them to Luba, which they finally lost, and then were faced with a conditional use permit where they had to address noise, parking, and traffic. And so we've gone through that process, we've built the arena, we did, they did an amazing job with the construction process that they did, and keeping the impacts to the neighborhood almost, almost to extreme minimum. And then also, when we created the agreements around the way that that Matt Knight Arena operated, and the different levels of traffic, and the fact that the U of O is paying for the parking district and not the community, not the taxpayers, and that the U of O agreed to give everybody in the parking district two free passes, all is paid through by the arena. So, and then all of those rules and the way that we set that up is the template for moving forward, I believe, for the new Hayward Field. Not that we would just take that group, the arena monitoring committee, and replicate it, because it's broader than that, it has other neighborhoods involved, so we need a new group. And I offered, as did the mayor, to participate in helping create that and making it work. But that, so we don't have to start from ground zero. We have the template, we know how this works. And so all that legwork that we've done will be, I think, used to make this new process and agreements that we come to with the U of O much easier and less time-consuming, and hopefully, less intensive of a public process and staff time.
Thank you. Betty?
When you talk about money, I have to, I remember that someone said how many people's tuition could be paid for what's going into this. But I hope you will also be thinking about other neighborhoods. It's like when we do something downtown, we push people out, it affects other neighborhoods. The parking district at the, near the U of O has affected other neighborhoods negatively. Because people, for example, who live on 25th Street cannot park in front of their own houses now, because parking is restricted up near the university, near the arena. And some people don't even have driveways, so they have no place to put their car unless they have to search for a place. Because people who can't park more than two hours near the university are parking on residential streets outside that area. So I hope that when you're considering the effects on neighborhoods, you would consider the effects on neighborhoods outside those neighborhoods too. I don't know what you can do about it, but.
Alan?
Yes, one of the things I had thought about in the parking part is that when they put in the arena, we got the J District, which is the Fairmont neighborhood. This stadium borders two neighborhoods, the South University Neighborhood Association, SUNA, and the Fairmont Neighbors, so they'd both be engaged in it. But it also impacts the Amazon Neighbors, so they likely should be in there and participating as well. But the, one of the solutions that we could engage in, and I've heard from many people canvassing, walking around in my reelection campaign, is about the parking problems that are created by the fact that the U of O doesn't have a lot of parking. And so a district, a parking district in the SUNA neighborhood and potentially part of the Amazon neighborhood could be one of the things that we talk about. I just went to a door and the guy was talking exactly about that issue, which is he couldn't park in front of his house because students come, park their cars there, take their bike out of their car, because there's no parking restriction, take their bike out of the car and ride to campus and come back at the end of the day. And so his parking spot, it's not his street, but the parking in front of his house doesn't exist because he, because it's taken up by U of O students. So that is a big issue, and involving all three of those neighborhoods in this process is very much on the top of my mind.
Okay, great. Any other comments? Are we ready for a vote on this second motion? All in favor? One, two, three, four, five, six? That's great. It passes, none opposed. Thank you very much. And I just want to close by thanking all of you coming and participating and sharing your thoughts. It has been informative for all of us and helpful for all of us. I'm glad we took the time. I also want to thank President Shill for taking the time to meet with us and to step forward and offer some solutions to how we could have a constructive process. So thank you all. Thank you, Alan, for the work you have done on this. And we are finished with this.
Okay, don't return.
We're not adjourned, we're not adjourned, we're finished with this. I was going to reach, but then I remembered. So we are finished with this topic. We do have time on the agenda for council, for committee reports on items of interest. So I'm prepared to start a queue on that. Emily, take it away.
Thank you. Once again, I'm going to bring up the minutes. I don't need a transcript of every word, but a list of general topics and ideas, attitudes aren't attributed to anybody, and I really need that information, so I have to go back and watch the webcast to find out who said what. I think it would be really useful to have more extensive minutes. They have been getting to us a little bit sooner, but, you know, we talk about stuff once again sometimes, sometimes, very quickly, and it would be helpful to have that information easily scannable than go to the video. I'm still concerned about outreach, about the only thing I like about the new register guard design is that the calendar's a little bit bigger. But I'd still like us to, you know, cheaper, faster, I don't know, but I've had ideas, and I just think it's really important for people to know when. and I just think it's really important for people to know when and what we're talking about. For instance, what just happened with Hayward Field, you know, it came up fast, one section got mobilized, the other section got mobilized according to them. An example I've been telling people is, say I hear from 50 people at the forum or by emails, which is fairly reasonable, and 45 people want something and five people don't. So obviously I'm going to have more weight to the 45 people, it's a much bigger percentage of energy about it. What if that's the only 45 people in the city that want it and everyone else doesn't know about it or is complacent? So what I'm trying to emphasize is your vote matters, your voice matters. I'm not really looking for 500 emails a day, maybe could get together and make some petitions, but I would like to hear from 500 people. It's amazing what matters to whom sometimes, and if you don't know when and what, how are you going to tell me what you think? And that's my job, is to represent what my constituents think and want. So I'd like more outreach. And then I have to bring up the downtown situation. We had a meeting yesterday with stakeholders, which I find a little hard because I only have a hot dog on a stick, but there was a lot of continued outrage about why haven't we fixed downtown yet? It's a crisis, it's been a crisis. And they're angry at me because it's my ward. And I have been working very, very hard in bringing forth a lot of ideas to help downtown. It's very complicated, has a lot of issues intertwined, but I'd like to put more emphasis, it's not a joke. Downtown needs us, money, time, now. Thanks.
Thank you. Other comments? Betty, go for it. I'm sorry, I had Chris first. Chris and then Betty.
Ditto to everything that was just said. I think that's right on. I agree completely. Just a couple of quick things. The Housing Policy Board met on Monday and began to talk about its ongoing efforts around affordable housing and those issues. And one of the things that's rapidly becoming aware, and that's what I wanted to get on your radar screen now, is we have identified both homelessness and housing as high focus issues. I don't want to say priorities, but I will use the word high focus issues. And if we are going to indeed believe and work for them to be high focus issues, we're going to have to devote some additional resources to them because staff, once again, is stretched to the absolute limit. We have already put a lot of extra work on the planning and development staff with regard to all the initiatives we're already doing. If we really want to pursue some of the stuff we've been talking around with affordable housing, including the cost side conversation we just had before on identifying barriers to construction of affordable housing, all of those are going to require some additional muscle. And I think there will need to be a resource aspect to that. We can't just ask the staff that's already there to continue to do it. So I think relatively soon, maybe as part of this budget cycle or maybe separate from it, we will be coming back, I think, as representing the affordable housing question with the need to be able to identify some additional resources to pay, whether it's on a contract basis or temporary staff or whatever it needs to be. We're going to need some extra money if we really want to get this done in a reasonable timeline, you know, fast, cheaper, right? Pick any two. We're going to need some resources in order to make this work. So I'm getting that on your radar screen now. The ElCog Executive Committee met yesterday to go over performance evaluation and one of the nice things about it is all of the different areas that we checked in on performance are ranked very high. ElCog has done a 180-degree improvement over the last six years. And the reason why I wanted to bring it up is, ElCog, if there's one challenge that they have that they need to work on, it is creating greater awareness of the services they provide, not only to large urban areas like us, which actually use a lot of ElCog services that we don't even know about, but also in rural areas as well. So that'll be something that they'll be working on, is creating opportunities to, for us to be more aware of exactly what ElCog does.
Great, great. Betty?
Thank you. I agree with Emily about minutes and a lot of us have said that over and over, that we need minutes. And something else that I've said over and over is we need a public service officer again. We used to have one. If constituents call me with questions or complaints, it would be really helpful if we had the public service officer to whom I could refer that, those things, so that that person could track it down. I don't always know which department or how to get hold of someone, but I think we need to respond to citizens, to their complaints and their requests for information. And for a while, we used to have rotating PSOs, we called them, public service officers. And then we had a steady one and it was really good. It was really helpful. Not to counselors and, and counselors, by the way, don't have any secretarial help, in case you didn't know that. And it was really helpful to have this person that you knew you could refer things to that would at least get some information to you and to the constituents. For downtown, I hope that we will actually do something about a shelter. I think if some of the people who are hanging out on the streets had another place to hang out and talk to each other, they might go there in the wintertime to keep warm, in the summertime just to sit together and have a cup of coffee and a place where the public service groups could drop in or maybe have offices there, maybe have a rotating office space, which I still think the old LCC building is a good spot for that. And I wish that we would start working with Ala Imami, Keesey Square, opening of the walls. And I don't think it's his responsibility to pay for that, I think it's the city's responsibility to pay for opening, what I understand, our city-owned walls, which would improve the traffic in that area and change things downtown somewhat. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike?
I know it makes a lot of people nervous when I start to agree with Betty on things. Read that in the mail recently, I think.
You must be right there.
Anyway, the, I want to give that little sentiment to the manager and say that since we have a budget coming up, I agree with Betty about the public service officer. And I know that's not in the proposed budget, at least I wouldn't assume that it was, but before I make such a thing as a motion, I would like to give the manager an opportunity to present to us an alternative that might be workables, you know, acceptable and such thing, but I did want to give you the heads up that there's, in the absence of a suggestion, there may be a motion to set effect during budget process.
And I'll have Becky put together some information. I guess we'll have to kind of make sure we understand what the issue is for folks and then we can sort of talk about that.
We had a young lady, and I believe, I may be wrong, but I believe her name was Michelle, who was our PSO for some.
We've had PSOs before, that's true. The question I think I'll have is just better understanding of what actually isn't happening now that happened with the PSO, other than there may have been a specific name. So I'm just want to make sure I understand what the scope of the concern is as opposed to, that's an automatic solution. So we'll, I'll have, ask Becky to spend some time either with a couple of folks or at least provide some information.
Sounds good.
Okay. Thank you. Yes.
Mayor, I just want to introduce Chris Skinner, our new police chief that's here. I did mention I'd bring him to a council meeting. Two counselors are not here unfortunately. I know several of you have already had a chance to meet with him. I want to invite you up, you can say a couple of words if you'd like to, but I know he also would like to, as he gets settled in, this is just his second week, that he'll be reaching out to each of you and spending time with you individually. So chief, if you just had a moment, if you wanted to say something?
Sure, thank you. You know, a chief of police is never going to pass up an opportunity to say something. All of you received kind of a quick email from me, I think, as I've settled into my eighth day on the job, it's safe to say I don't have it all figured out. But part of how I do get it figured out is through the relationships we build both internally and externally with this police department and this leadership team. And you guys are important pieces of that, to be able to understand different perspectives from around the city as we start to identify kind of a strategic direction we want to go with the police department. So we're going to try and work some magic with schedules and just do kind of a touch base. My preference would be, if you want to come to the PD and show you around, happy to do that. I love getting out in the community, maybe meet you in your wards at your favorite place and just sit and talk a little bit about what's going on. But I'm doing one-on-ones right now in the police department. As you can imagine, my schedule has been very, very busy. People are taking advantage of that. There's a, I think, a renewed sense of excitement and optimism about the direction we're going and some opportunities we have into the future. I appreciate the comments around the table today about looking towards the future. I think we would be well-deserved to kind of use this as a jumping off point to look forward instead of behind us on what some of the challenges have been. And I'm really looking forward to being able to lead that discussion. So we'll work on the schedule and we'll get together and get to know each other a little bit better and that'll be one of the, one of the highlights of my, of my early time here will be to get to know all of you. So, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Are you going to change your name, first name to Eugene or Mary?
It's, it's.
Probably not Mary.
It's amazing how many people have made the comment to me, if there's any relation, my first answer is usually, I don't appreciate the county suing me. Having a little bit of fun with it. But no, it's been fun. It's been a nice nexus, you know, the piece of this, and just a quick story, the piece of this that collateral benefit to me coming back to what I believe to be my home state is, yesterday I attended the Fallen Officer Memorial up at Department of Public Safety Standards and Training. As you know, Police Week is starting next week and it offers, and it honors all of those officers that have given their lives in the line of duty. And as I approached the ceremony, was there just overwhelmingly the people that I knew from my prior 20 years here, just that welcoming sense of welcome back home, glad to see you, it's time, it's time to get to work. But the relationships that I had built in those 20 years in law enforcement, I think, are going to serve us very, very well, the connectivity all up and down the I-5 corridor with every chief. I think I know every sheriff and chief up and down the I-5 corridor, we've had some touch points. And I think we leverage that, we leverage those great relationships to move us forward because as you, as you pointed out, there's, there's nothing that we can accomplish solely as a single entity, it's really a collective effort in what we're trying to accomplish. And so I'll look forward to kind of building upon those as well, so.
Thank you so much. We're very excited to have you as our new police chief. So we look forward to getting to know you better, the work ahead. And I think that brings us to a close. Thank you all very much.